I'd like to call to order a staff meeting of April the 26th. If you could please introduce yourself.
That'll be great.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board. County Commissioner Alicia Reese, Vice President of the Board.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Aluto, County Administrator.
Vice President and Legal Counsel.
Thank you so much, and I am Stephanie Summer Odumis, President of the Board. So we will get to work, ladies. Our first item on the agenda is Paul Brown Stadium Capital Assessment Update, and I believe our Administrator is going to tee this off for us.
Happy to, Madam President. So just in terms of introduction, before I get to our featured presenter here today, just some background, especially for those who may be watching from home, who might not have a lot of history on the stadium and the history behind the stadium here in Hamilton County. But as the Board is very well aware, the voters of Hamilton County back in 96 approved a half-cent sales tax to fund the construction and operation of two professional sports stadiums on the riverfront here in Hamilton County. Today's presentation relates to one of these stadiums, Paul Brown Stadium, a 65,000-seat stadium constructed for approximately $449 million, and which has been in use for over two decades now as the home of the Cincinnati Bengals. So recognizing the age of the stadium and that the initial lease term between the county and the Bengals expires in 2026, the county and team agreed to cooperatively fund a capital assessment of Paul Brown Stadium to determine whether and how the stadium could continue to be used for decades to come. As a reminder, and for context for the public, Riverfront Stadium was constructed in 1970. It fell into disrepair and was demolished in the early 2000s. Before I go any further, I do want to thank, on that note, the ownership and the staff of the Cincinnati Bengals for their partnership on this project and their willingness to take a proactive look at Paul Brown Stadium four to five years in advance of the initial lease term expiring. I also want to thank the county staff for their role and efforts day-to-day in working this critical issue and maintaining the stadium on behalf of the public and the taxpayer for all of these years. And we do, I know in the back of the room, I see Joe Feldkamp, who is the Director of our stadium parking operation, Joe Paul, and Jim Morgan, who are in the back, who are representing that group today. So I want to thank them. And I want to stress that both the county and the team are aligned in our desire for Paul Brown Stadium to continue to work sustainably for decades to come for the people of Hamilton County who funded its construction. So to that end, the county and the team jointly agreed to hire a leading stadium architecture and engineering firm to perform a capital audit of the stadium. Following a public procurement process, we jointly selected Gensler, a national leader in sports architecture, and local partner Elevar to conduct that assessment. Gensler was charged with two objectives. Number one, conducting a facility condition assessment to assess the current infrastructure of Paul Brown Stadium and the timing and the cost of future needed improvements to that basic core infrastructure. And number two, a master plan to assess opportunities for upgrades to respond to new technology, the evolution of the NFL stadium market, and changes necessary to improve fan experience, efficiencies, and the economics of the stadium. Today, we have the results and recommendations of the facility condition assessment portion of that work. And we're pleased to have Demitra Thornton, who is a Principal at Gensler, here to walk us through this. We'll get to her PowerPoint in just a second. But a couple of points before I turn it over to Demitra. First, the information that Demitra is going to be presenting, again, represents only the result of the facility condition assessment. This is not the master plan, which will come later. We had thought about holding on this particular public presentation until the results of the master plan were ready, but we felt this was too important and crucial of a building block in that assessment not to do something publicly prior to. Second, this information is the analysis and recommendations of Gensler. At this point, this is not the recommendation of the county and the team, and we'll get into that a little bit more in a bit after Demitra's presentation when we discuss next steps. And finally, as we hear from Demitra, I think it's important to note that Paul Brown Stadium was constructed at a time when numerous other NFL stadiums were being developed. And we're hearing now that many of these facilities, and Demitra will touch on this as well, are preparing for major upgrades and, more often than not, replacement at a mean cost of close to $2 billion. We've seen Buffalo at $1.4 billion estimated. Nashville's Nissan Stadium, which opened one year, just one year before Paul Brown Stadium, was projecting about $1 billion in repairs before determining that they ultimately were going to go with a new stadium. We've heard about Washington, the commanders looking at a $3 billion stadium. So this is the relevant context for the market that I just wanted to get out there for the Board's consumption and for the public before we get into the discussion about the facility condition assessment. I'll have some more comments as we wrap up, but at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Demitra Thornton, who will walk us through a summary of the facility condition assessment.
Thank you, Jeff, and I think you said it. This includes facility infrastructure only, not the master plan. And as we move forward, we want to be as transparent as we can in all processes. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. So I'm really glad to be here today. I'm a little bit of a nomadic speaker, so if I walk too far away from the mic, just tell me to return back here. But I'm glad to be here today, and I just want to start it off by saying I'm a true fan. So I actually grew up in Cincinnati, Ohio. That's my father and I at the Super Bowl this past February. Grew up in Cincinnati, Ohio, went to St. Ursula Academy. More professionally, went away to go to school, came back, but I've always been a sports fan and am fortunate enough to be a sports architect, which is great. I mean, I can't tell you how proud it makes me to be able to do something in my hometown and, you know, say I had a footprint on a stadium like this. So just wanted to kick that off. Professionally, I am Managing Director and Principal at Gensler. As we mentioned, Gensler is a leading sports architecture firm. We do work across the entire world, and we've teamed with Elevar. So the agenda today is to take a deep dive on the team, look at the timeline for this process. Again, this is just the assessment component. There's still the master plan to come. Look at the project and what the goals have been, and then break down the assessment a little bit. We'll talk about some of the specifics that we found in the assessment. I know everyone has just received a copy, so excited to break that down a little bit. And then the next step, which is the master plan. Ultimately, the assessment and the master plan will result in a renovation. So what we want to do is overlap those two things. As we talk about some of the things in the assessment that we found, many of that will be covered or addressed in a master plan. So if we're doing, you know, fan experience upgrades, that may take care of some of the things that we found in the assessment. So again, a little about Gensler. Gensler is a global firm with over 6,000 people, 54 offices worldwide. We've teamed with Elevar. Many of you may know Elevar. They're a staple within the city. They've done a ton of the work on Paul Brown Stadium over the last 20 years. So Gensler, my colleague Ron Turner, he was working with another firm, but he did the original design. So it's this marriage of people that did the original design, plus me, who's a huge fan and local to the area, plus Elevar, which is, you know, a great firm within the city. Go to the next slide here. It's not just the architects. We had a list of consultants. Venue Solution Group is a facility management firm, and they survey buildings like this across the entire nation. So we got them on board because they're the best in the business. Thermal Tech, another local MEP firm. So they've been instrumental in analyzing the air handling units, the ducts, all of the infrastructure of the building. They've also been instrumental in just the planning for energy efficiency in the building throughout. They've worked with a Maresco and things like that over the last decade. WJHW, as many of you know, there was an update to the video boards, the main scoreboards. WJHW did that work. So it's great to have them on board to see how the facility needs to progress into the future. S2O is a nationwide food service consultant. So they work with us to see what is happening in the food industry nationwide and how Paul Brown can be updated to align with some of those goals. And lastly, Thornton Tomasetti, that's our structural engineer. So again, the structural engineer here did the structural engineering for the original design, the lead structural engineer here. So it's again about pulling people that know the building over the last 20 years and know the industry well enough to take it into the future. Take a step back and look at the timeline. As Jeff mentioned, this process started back in 2018, when the county and the team decided to do an audit of the facility and see how it compares to other facilities in the nation. So that started in 2018. There was an RFP that came out late 2019, looking for firms that specialize in this and to do the work. Late 2020, in the middle of pandemic, that's when Gensler and Elevar were contracted to do the work. So we've been working over the last 12 to 18 months to assemble this assessment. And then, so here we are today, presenting this assessment to you. First time you've seen it, it's 200 pages, so huge document, very thorough. But we went through, you know, every inch of the building to see what, to understand just the building and what it's been, what it's looked like over the last 20 years. The county and the Bengals have a joint goal, and they're committed to the community and the stadium for decades to come. So everyone's saying, hey, how can we make this building last for the next 20, 25 years? And what do we need to do with the current design? Let's analyze the current design. One thing to mention is that when we first designed Paul Brown, the goal was to future-proof it, right? To make it something that lasts for a lifetime. And then this is our roadmap for the future. That's what this assessment will be. It'll be part of the roadmap. The master plan will be the other component to that roadmap. So let's contextualize this a bit. I remember going to games here at Riverfront, and I remember enjoying both baseball and football games here. And then the one other memory I have is coming back one year for Christmas break and seeing it get imploded. So on one hand, that was really cool, to see a building get imploded. But on the other hand, it's like, why did the building have to get imploded? That was one of the main things we thought about when designing Paul Brown Stadium, making it future-proof, making it something that didn't, you know, outgrow itself or not last and change with the sports industry. So Paul Brown Stadium is a very futuristic, very postmodern design that has the bones to be able to expand and adjust with our industry. Another fun fact for the architecture nerds, it's the only NFL stadium that has won an AIA award. So again, if you're an architecture nerd, that's really cool. And it's listed with other facilities for that. So let's talk about the assessment a bit. We broke down all the elements of the building in the assessment, and one of the first things we looked at was the structure. We wanted to, when we say structure, we're thinking the seating bowl, the floor slabs, the columns, the beams, all the things that hold the building up. And we're, after our analysis, we feel like it's in good shape. It's been well-maintained over the last 20 years. And the structure that's there can be expanded upon. And when we say expanded upon, we're thinking for the master plan. So there are obviously repairs that need to happen over time, but the bones are there. What we say a lot of time in the construction and architecture industry, it has good bones. So we do feel that the building, Paul Brown Stadium, has good bones. The other thing we looked at is the roofing. Paul Brown Stadium has five different types of roofs. The most iconic one being the canopy that shades the upper deck. We looked at these and we, all evidence indicated that it's been well-maintained over the last 20 years. And, you know, yes, some areas have been repaired and replaced and things like that, but that's normal. Over 20 years, many times you'll see buildings that don't last that long, or roofs that don't last that long. So we were really excited to see that, A, it's been well-maintained, and B, the repairs, the proper repairs have been done over the last 20 years. The next thing we looked at is some of the interiors and just the core architecture. On the left, you see a picture of the concession. One of the things, as I mentioned, Thermal Tech worked with, is improving the lighting. So these are new LED lights that have been recently replaced in the building. Things like that help to extend the life of the building. On the right, this is an updated concession. This isn't the original concession, but the team and the county have worked to continually maintain the building and enhance the fan experience with things like this. So we are excited to see that. There are other things that, you know, not all the lights have been modified to LED. There's still some fluorescent lights. And that's not only an architectural thing, it's also an energy efficient thing, like making the lights LED assists with your costs, is the cost savings of the building. The other thing we looked at is the vertical transportation. Vertical transportation, when we say that, we mean the ramps, the escalators, the elevators. Those things get a lot of wear and tear. That's where most of the fans use, and that's how the food and any goods are, they travel up and down the building. So this is an area where we feel like some of these, although they've been repaired over the last 20 years, this is one of the elements that, just there's not parts to replace, there's not parts available to repair some of these things. So these are, this is one of the elements that we felt like our recommendation was to modify some of these things, just because parts aren't always available to replace this. But overall, still well-maintained as best possible with the available parts. Technology, this is one that's always changing. As you know, like, how often do you update your cell phone or your computer and things like this? We recently got new video boards in the facility, but this is something that the team and the county will continue to watch and see what the fans want or what the fan, the community is asking for to improve and keep ahead of the technologies. So right now, the technology here is great because it's been recently updated, but this is something that we'll continue to watch and analyze as the industry changes. Some other things we looked at is, as I mentioned before, the MEP, all of the HVAC, the fireproofing, the security. Security has changed drastically over the last 20 years. How people get in and out of the buildings, scanning your tickets on your phones now versus paper tickets, how many cameras are in the building, things like that. So we did an analysis of that, as well as the food and beverage. People want things that, in addition to fried, you know, hot dogs and hamburgers. So we did an analysis of that. The food product in Paul Brown is great. You have some local vendors, you have Gold Star and things like that. So we looked at those things. The other thing is just the fire protection and the code. The code has changed drastically. The building code has changed drastically over the last 20 years. In many cases, it's been relaxed for assembly buildings, so that's a good thing. Paul Brown is in excess, in most cases, for the accessibility. In summary, we felt like Paul Brown Stadium is in good condition, especially for a 20-year-old building, which is just a testament that it's been maintained well over the last 20 years. People have invested into the asset. You want to keep it. You're proud of it. The community loves it. It's a great place to engage and be a fan. And then just the progressive design. As I mentioned, this, the original design was meant to be expand and to change with times. We learned from Riverfront. We said, I don't want this building to be imploded. I want it to last the test of time. So PBS, again, is well-positioned to meet the needs of the future in sports architecture. So the other part of our assessment is just to put a cost to what needs to happen over the next 20 years. So this isn't a laundry list of things that need to be done tomorrow, not at all. In fact, this is a list of things that could happen, and then we'd have this master plan component. So this is just one part of it. Once we look at the master plan, there may be some of these things on this list that fall off. And we looked at this and we said, let's prioritize this. Let's future-proof the building. Let's give the county and the Bengals a list of things that we recommend be done, but not all of them have to be done. That's up to your team to analyze that. That assessment that we looked at will help guide the capital budgets for the next two to three years, so '23 and '24. There's some, I understand there is a list of things in the capital improvements to date, but we may re-prioritize those things once you guys have a moment to look at this. The other component is that, as Jeff mentioned, what we're seeing in the industry is people are getting new buildings. We don't feel that that's necessary here. And this, if we go back a slide here, this is a fraction of that cost, right? Over 20 years, we're talking under $500 million, where we're looking at other facilities that are spending $1.2 to $2 billion for a new facility. So that's why we're, I'm personally proud to be from Cincinnati and see that the building's been well-maintained, and to say that, hey, this building can last for decades to come. Skip back to here again. So the next steps, as I mentioned before on that timeline, the next steps will be the master plan. And what will we do in the master plan? We'll look for things that enhance fan experience. That's updating concessions. As I mentioned, we're seeing concessions where people walk in and they select their food versus what we call a belly-up, where, you know, there's distance between your food and the patron. So we'll look at things like that. Making this building more of a community asset, that's really important. This is located amazingly anchored in the banks, right? It anchors the baseball stadium and the football stadium, anchor the banks. So just making this more of a community asset that people can use not only on game days. This is not for a few events a year. This is for, to be used all the time. Modernize it to align with industry trends. Examples of that are updating the club spaces, updating the concessions, making more seating types. When this building was designed, rightfully so, there was really just clubs, GA seats, and suites. Now we're seeing more, what we call lodge boxes, for smaller, more intimate groups, and more standing room only, things like that. So really taking a look at what the, where the industry is going and how we can make adjustments pretty modestly to update the Paul Brown Stadium and be current. And lastly, just creating an experience to attract that next generation of fan, right? Like, I went here, but I want my kids to go here and things like that. So what's going to attract that next generation of fans? Many times, this technology, in some cases, we don't know what that next generation is going to want, but we want to make sure that the Paul Brown Stadium can accept that. And that's all I have. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Of course.
It's obvious about what we've done here, that you did the scene corners in the crannies. And so it's also very good to hear that we, our stadium's been well-maintained, and I think that the staff back here that have done it for years, every assessment they can make of this world. I only have one question.
Sure.
You're just now telling me? Did you guys hear everything? Do I need to repeat?
I heard you.
Okay, I'll start over, yeah, right. Thank you. But I just wanted to say, as it relates to the architecture, that is primarily for enhancements, would you say that, since the stadium is well-maintained?
Yes, enhancements and increasing the fan experience.
Okay.
So, you know, there's things that you do architecturally that will increase the fan experience, like the concessions is an example of that.
Yeah.
Opening those up, making those walk in.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Great.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, I'll open it up to Vice President Reese, if you had any comments or questions.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for your presentation, and certainly, let me say, proud to have someone come from Hamilton County and be able to come back with your training and expertise to help us as we move forward regarding this issue. I wanted to say, and I'm speaking just for myself, each of us will have to speak individually. I was not here with the original deal was done. And I just want to highlight, I know we've got a lot of media here today, and we appreciate, thank you guys for being here. And there'll be a lot written about this issue. But I want to set the right tone, because our Board has been working very hard. This is an important issue, but we've got people watching at home, I want to be very clear, but this is not the issue of Hamilton County. And I'm not saying that for you, I want to make sure the media, because they'll be writing a lot of stories, and some other folks that are taxpayers will say, well, what about our issues? What's going on? So I want to repeat that. For me, this is an important issue, but this is not the issue for Hamilton County. And want to make sure, and I know this probably goes without saying, but just on the record for our Administrator to know that these other issues that we're working on, affordable housing, making sure people can afford the house they already have as they're fighting against inflation, helping senior citizens, which we just announced a fund, it didn't get much press, $1.25 million that we put forward for seniors who are struggling right now to get their gas and electric that has gone up, and be able to also get a boiler. We have a hotline number now for senior citizens in Hamilton County for the first time in history. Assisting our smaller cities and our large cities, our villages and our townships with economic development as they wrestle with redefining and redeveloping their areas. Helping small businesses, we put more money in small businesses than ever before, but now we have the first-ever Hamilton County Small Business Office. Our goal is to be the number-one county for small businesses. And of course, with transportation, the Western Hills Viaduct, and a number of infrastructure issues that we have in the county. And last but not least, my number-one priority is how do we also fight as hard to, which we did this year, but to have a 30% property tax rollback so that we can reduce the cost on the taxpayers. Our focus, as you said, I am a huge fan as well, a huge sports fan, huge Bengals fan. But as we move into this component, we have to look at how do we, as we represent our shareholders, which are the taxpayers, how do we get the right investment, the right win-win, and how do we reduce the cost on the taxpayers, at the same time having something that will attract not only games, but tourism, concerts, et cetera. Our original, you mentioned some of the other, our Administrator mentioned some of the other places, for example, Tennessee. And I researched them, and I know there'll be some comparisons. Well, Tennessee's doing this, Buffalo's doing this. They're doing some things that we're not doing, and we're doing some things they're not doing.
Agreed.
You know, we're out here with a 513 relief bus and helping thousands of people get help and not get evicted and get good health. But in their mix of this, obviously, you look forward to having, you know, a more comprehensive, more comprehensive discussion when we look at master plan, lease extension, and how do we take the cost, some of that cost, off the taxpayers. But when I looked at Tennessee, and I wanted to know, I said, man, how are they funding this? You know? And one of the things I thought is, as we're looking at the stadiums themselves, we want to look at stadiums and lease agreements. We want to have apples to apples, not apples to oranges. And in there, their owner of the Titans talks about, in their agreement, the state putting up a huge chunk of the money. I don't really see the county, maybe they're buried in a lease, but they're, the way they're funding it, they got $500 million from the state of Ohio. I mean, a state of Tennessee, rather. I'm speaking future, huh? The state of Tennessee put up majority of the money, then they've got some from their tourism accounts. And then they talk about a negotiation called a go-forward maintenance and capital expenses of the building. of the building. And he goes on to say, he wants to take that burden off of the cities, at that time, the city's taxpayers. So I'm interested in their model. They also talked about an enclosed facility. And the reason I say that, I don't know if we looked at a retractable component, but we are seasonal and we need to be making more money off of the stadiums, not just the stadium, than we're making. The stadiums are sitting dark too long and not bringing in the dollars. Now, in the original lease, which I have here, we were supposed to hire somebody to bring in concerts, and I know we bring in McGraw. And I need, I would tell the administrator, I need more McGraws coming. And I think that in our assessment, I'd like to see something that exercises this maybe quicker than later. How do we get somebody hired immediately like we had in this lease? And I wasn't here for the original lease and my colleagues weren't either, but this original lease say that we're supposed to have somebody full-time getting some concerts, some events to get these both stadiums, keep these stadiums jumping. And when we do that, we get the taxpayers that we represent, we get 50% off the rental. So when you talk about the fan experience, I want to make sure that in the assessment, that it is noted in our lease, that we need to start, when you talk about the tiers and what we could do now versus later, I want to start in the next 30 days, somebody hired that was supposed to be hired, to start getting me some more Tim McGraw concerts. We got the Tim McGraw, we got the festival, but I need something, you know, we, we're, this facility is 365 days and I appreciate our Bengals extending our season, but when we're not in season, I need more Tim McGraws. So one of the things, Mr. Administrator, I want to put to report back to us, this clause that's in there, and how do we get somebody hired, secured in 30 days with a plan on how we get more concerts, more events, more activities, and what we're already paying for, as you've said, how do we use it better? I've got a shopping bag full of, of, of questions, however, I just got this, all of us, 30 minutes ago. Now, I will say in the future for master plan, I need some more days, so when you come, I can ask you a lot of questions, because when you leave, I will have a ton of questions. And I like these questions, I think our process, Madam President, as you've indicated, we must be transparent, we must present the information in a, and I call it a raw form.
Yes.
This is something that, you know, our shareholders, our taxpayers got to pay for. They want to know every step of the way. And I want to be on record that I want to be out in the open. I want this whole discussion out in the open. I think when you're out in the open, you have a better partnership, people are more willing to go forward. So I do appreciate the PowerPoint, but again, if, I would like to get some, a little more time on this, so when you show up, I have questions that would be tabbed, ready to go, and that the people will know what those questions are. The other thing that I wanted to bring up in here, when you talk about the, back to the funding model, in their funding model, it also has private dollars in the Tennessee funding model. And they also mentioned the NFL providing some dollars. So, you know, they've got over, it's a $1 billion proposal, but 500 million is coming from the state. 700 million, they said, in private money. I'd like to know how they did that, what's that private money, there's a private investment? I think our, ours is a lot less investment in terms of the balance. And then they talk about, something about an NFL help with the NFL.
There's a loan, yes.
Yeah, I've been seeing a lot of that lately, that's different than, I guess, years before. Is that a loan, NFL, or is the NFL really kicking in something?
It's a loan.
It's a loan. Yeah, I, I think, I'd like to get more information from the NFL, because even with our watch party, the NFL came in and told us, we could not, the taxpayers paying for the facility could not have a watch party. It's like telling me a house I'm paying on, it told me I couldn't sit in a living room. So I'd like to end this assessment, figure out how do we, as a board, have some interaction? I would like to meet with Roger Goodell. I'd like to meet with the NFL financiers. And I also, once I get my knee fixed, because I tore my meniscus, I would like to do a walk. I'm very visual, I like to do a walk through at Paul Brown and some of the things that you're pointing out, I could get a better understanding with. And Mr. Administrator, we may have to do a tour. I would be willing to go and I, I don't want to talk to my colleagues, but I think we need, this is, you know, we need to go to these cities and see what they're doing, how they, how are these counties financing these things? Meet with the NFL, if we have to go there, to meet with their finance team, how are they putting these deals together? Because at the end of the day, I think we're all, both from the private side and the public side, we all agree that we're looking for a better deal, a better deal that could be a win-win. So that's one of the things. Can you tell me about roofing? You mentioned roofing, but you didn't say much about it. Is there some kind of opportunity there for roofing, for the existing model? Did you look at that?
You mean a roof over, a dome?
Yeah, yeah, like a, I don't know, a temporary, they got some new materials, I was told, that now can be used to help us be more?
So I, I can speak a little bit about a roof on, on an existing facility. Many times what we found, and we've done this, this research with other facilities across, across the country, when you put the roof on, on the building, that's one component. The other component that needs to be added to it is the MEP, so to condition the building, right? Once you, it's no longer open air. So that's sometimes what kills the deal in, in, in terms of the roof. The roof itself, yes, as you mentioned, it, it may open up additional events, open up opportunities for additional events, but then when you think about heating and conditioning in the building, it becomes inefficient from, from a heating-cooling standpoint, because that's the volume of the seating bowl that you're trying to, to condition. Happy to, you know, with, with your blessing, happy to look at it, but that's usually why that, that doesn't, you don't roof an existing facility.
Got you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I'd just like to have it on the table.
Okay.
Because I don't, you know, 20 years from now, I don't want another group sitting here saying, why in the world?
Understood.
Did they not look at something like that?
As, as you mentioned, we've looked at every square inch of the building, so happy to, to investigate that, but generally speaking, that's why it doesn't typically work for many facilities. Nashville looked at, looked at a roof, roofing their existing facility.
Got you. And when will we have the master plan?
Probably towards the end of the year.
Yeah.
So it will, we'll do, just same thorough investment that we did with the assessment, we'll, we'll do with the, do with the master plan. And with the master plan, we do like to see the, see the building win in action, and unfortunately, because of the pandemic, it hasn't been to its full capacity. But with last season, we're, we're anticipating that, you know, there will be full capacity in the building several times, so.
It'll be full?
It'll be full.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, if I could, just very quickly on a process-related issue, Vice President Reese had mentioned questions and things of that nature. So as the, as the production of this report kind of dovetailed with this meeting, we realized that the board hasn't had a chance to go through everything. So given the timing on the master plan, I think we'd be happy to work with Dimitri for her to come back at a later time if there is additional questions and we wanted to have a, another meeting to discuss some of the innards of this report, if you will, if that would help, but we didn't want to delay any longer just in terms of getting the public presentation done, so.
Yeah, and I agree with that. And I was saying, before you start looking into other stuff, let us pay for this, for this report. This is a great report and just FYI, it was a joint venture financially, the Bengals and, and the county paid for this assessment to be done. And of course, our number one primary focus will be to try to reduce the amount of impact on our taxpayers as relates to providing these enhancements, so. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, thanks for being here and working in such a collaborative way. I can see that you've brought in many experts for the many different facets of the stadium, roof and concrete and food, vending and all that kind of stuff. So I appreciate the level of expertise that you brought into the process so that we really do have what I call like a nuts and bolts kind of product in front of us that we can kind of get our arms around. A couple of things I just wanted to note, and has been mentioned by others, that the county and the Bengals have done this together. I'm grateful for the collaboration. You know, we're trying to get to a common understanding of what basic needs are needed to make sure that the stadium is safe and that we can continue to have the general public in the stadium in a safe way. So appreciate that collaboration. I'm also struck, and you, you said it many, many times, that because of what the county has done before any of us were here, I give credit where credit's due, many people were involved in maintaining the stadium.
Yes.
To the degree where we don't have to build a new stadium.
Right.
And that is something that I think we should be very proud of. We stand on the shoulders of others related to that, but I'm very glad to see that we're talking about renovations, not replacement, because the cost is so different. If we were talking about replacement, we'd be in the billions. And in this report, you've identified closer to 490 million. I understand the master plan has to be evaluated in context with this.
Right.
But that's much cheaper for the taxpayers and I'm, I'm very, very grateful that that's where we stand as a county and that's what we're looking at here. I wanted to talk a little bit too about the financial stack. I note in the report, the financial stack generally in the past has been, you know, we've got the sales tax that's devoted to the maintenance of these stadiums, but others have gone out to the state, to the NFL, to private donors and said, hey, can you help us with our financial stack? And so I too am intrigued by that and am wondering, the, the research that was done related to what other markets are doing, other stadiums, other teams are doing, not only to the financial stack, but some of what we think, or you think, we might expect when it comes to the master plan, because I am not aware of what all the other markets are doing by way of forward-thinking maintenance or projects in these stadiums that take them to the next level. As you say, you know, Wi-Fi is something that, technology is something we need to pay attention to, because the crowds are getting younger and they're more tech savvy and so we need to pay attention to these things than we are. But what else are you seeing in some of these other markets that you think might be down the pike?
Uh, we're seeing things, just the diversity of seating types. So as I mentioned, there, there's essentially three different types of seating, arguably four in Paul Brown now, but we've worked on facilities where there's 10. And, and what does that look like? What does that striation look like for bringing additional fans in, in the building? If I can't afford to sit in the suite, where else, but I don't want to sit in a GA seat, where, what are some other seat, seating options that I have? So we're seeing a lot of, a lot of interest there.
Can I, I'm still not sure I understand. So you mean different sections?
Different sections.
Okay.
So if, if I don't want to sit in a, in a game and I want to stand, I want a roaming ticket, I just want to get in the building and walk around, I want to review the game from different, different parts of the building. I'm, it's a, it's a ticket that's typically a little bit cheaper, a little less expensive, but I'm in the building, I'm part of the action, I'm a fan, but I don't, I don't have the same commitment, the same financial commitment. And it just brings, again, different people in different community sectors into the building, which is, I think, ultimately what, what you want to see.
Does that also add capacity?
Yes.
Potentially?
Yes, potentially.
Okay, okay. So that's interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what else are you seeing by way of the other markets?
Food, food is a big, a big driver. What, what can I get in the stadium that I can't get anywhere else? Again, bringing people into the facility. And how am I, how am I enjoying that food? I'm, I'm not just seeing it presented behind a, a glass window, I'm, I'm actually able to touch, reach out and touch my food. And again, some of this is, you know, underway with COVID and things like that, because the, the market has changed. But how food is prepared and served and presented to fans is, is changing drastically. Security is another one, getting people in and out of the building quicker. We're seeing facilities that don't have the magnometers that, that you, it's just more technology where you just walk through and it's scanning to make sure you don't have any, you know, dangerous devices on you. So those are the types of things that, that we're seeing in the industry that could be applied or in, in the master plan when we look at it more, more deeply.
Okay, and then by way of the financial stack, it's state funding, it's local funding, it's NFL loans?
It's a different, I, it's tough for me to answer that, because I think it's, as, as Ms. Reese mentioned, it's different for every city and every state. So that, that'd be a tough one for me to answer, but I think research and calling around other teams will, will get you that information of how, how they're financing these things.
Okay, great, thank you. So I've looked at, I did get into this dense document a little bit, you know, when it talks about the HVAC system and the roofing and the concrete and, I don't have any questions related to that, I just don't know enough to have questions related to that, but thank you for providing it, because it really is the basic infrastructure and what we're talking about in this report. So I just have one last question, really, I think it's for Administrator Ludo. So this piece is the first building block related to what we need to do in, in the future for this stadium in conjunction with the Bengals. And it is, it leads into negotiations with the Bengals. So we've got the second piece that you referred to, that you are, I guess you're, there's no overlap here, so you're going to start working on that now?
And that was on purpose.
Okay.
Sometimes we see these things work in conjunction, but we really wanted to do the assessment as one part and then the master plan. So one, one isn't clouding the other.
Okay.
So that was a conscious decision by the county and the Bengals to do those separately, which we felt like that's a smart, that's a smart thing to do.
And so the master plan then comes hopefully by the end of the year, that's step number two, the, the second building block. We, we marry those things and try to see what the overlap is and how they work with one another. And then we have a more robust picture of the basic needs in addition to some of the things we want, we might want to think about.
Enhancements.
Right. Enhancements. And that's when we really start to formulate a dollar amount, kind of a baseline related to both of those reports.
That's exactly it.
That's the idea?
Yes.
And so the timeframe is hopefully by the end of the year and then we start having those more robust conversations with the Bengals.
Correct, correct.
Thank you. Did you have anything else, Mr. Ludo?
I think between their conversation, they kind of answered the question, so nothing else really to add other than that, other than just to echo, as, as you said, as we start to get into that, you know, we are, we are at the very, very beginning stage of this. There is, there are other things to, to marry in with it, with, with the master plan, then we can start to, to look more specifically at financial plans, et cetera, which also hinge upon the timing of when these things are done as well. And between you, Ms. Thornton and Commissioner Reese, you hit, I mean, what we're typically seeing around the, the country are a, a mix of, of private, private funding, state capital assistance, local funding, and then, as was said, the, the NFL loan devices and loan mechanisms that are being brought to bear as, as well now, which in, in the past, when, when the initial stadium was developed, we used a mix of most of those, we didn't use the NFL financing tool at that point in time. So that's something that we'll have to work with the team on as we start looking at all of the various funding sources to put into the mix here.
Thank you so much, and I'm glad that we're having our forward-thinking, this is a forward-thinking board in that we're getting a jump on this, and as you were saying, this is just the beginning. And I thank you so much in your company for such hard work and just being specific, and I'll be looking at this more, of course, and giving us a, a beginning of where we need to start, so.
Madam President, I got two more questions.
Okay.
Going back on the, the financial deck, I would like to know, as we are moving forward, on the NFL loan component, it is a loan, it has to be paid back, is that, who gets the loan? Do we get the loan? You don't have to answer it today, but we need to get that out. Who gets the loan? That's why I want to know more about the NFL financial component. Who pays it? Who's on the hook for it? Is this, the team have to get the loan and they got to pay it back? Or is this something, we get the loan and the taxpayers have to ta, pay it back? I think that's a very important question. I also think on the assessment, as we go into the master plan, so you're still, they're still, you're still on the retainer, if you will.
Yes.
I do want to look at what is the roof situation? That is very important, so I do want that looked at, as you talk about the fan experience, as well as the tailgating experience. Because I know some of the facilities have something like grass and some of them don't, just, you know, and I know that the Bengals had some ideas on that as well, so I do want to look at that, the experience surrounding the, the place. I know they have a, a practice, a temporary practice facility that they're funding that's going up, but I'm sure there may be something for a permanent indoor practice facility, so we need to, I'm sure that'll all be in the, the, the master plan. And then I think the important thing... And then I think the important thing, Mr. Administrator, to note today that people are watching and so forth, this is obviously the assessment that you've done with the walkthrough. But I think noting that, obviously, we don't want to be like, you know, I can't remember one of the cities that got a stadium, built, got all the stuff going, but then no team. The team left and we played that team. And I won't even talk about who that team is anymore that played us in the Super Bowl. They don't, they don't matter anymore. But they ended up leaving and running out to California. And they stuck with a empty stadium. So I know that as we're approaching this jointly in a, with the Bengals and a partner, both at the table, can you reiterate that piece again, that obviously we're not talking about lease extension today? However, when we're looking at fixing something up, we got to have a tenant. And I think we have expressed that from our positioning as well with the Bengals. Can you?
Yeah, yeah, Madam Vice President, thank you. So obviously, and I think we said it earlier on, the, the current lease expires in, in 2026. There is an option for extensions that, that the team has. But as we're talking about this level of public investment with this and, and the master plan and the, and the future of the, of the team here in Paul Brown Stadium and in Hamilton County, I think the, the county and the team are aligned that these discussions have to go together, these types of investments and an extended renewed lease. So that, those, those two discussion topics are part and parcel to one another, to your point, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I think the whole board feels that same way. We've talked about it individually with you. So thank you so much, Ms. Thorpe.
Can I ask for a clarifying question? You just raised something. So as, as we go through this process, we get the second report by the end of the year. The recommendations, and correct me if I'm wrong, they, they all fold into the negotiations with the Bengals. That negotiation is 2026. Do, is there any expectation that any of these findings will be implemented before the lease negotiations?
So I think, I'll, I'll speak to this if Demetra wants to, to add on. But I, so I think in the, in the interim, I think this may have been mentioned in one of the slides, but in, in the interim, we, we have these, we have these findings now. And some of them are, you know, the, again, these are findings that talk about a, projects over the course of 20 years. So this is a, a long-term, but some of them are much more urgent than others. And as Demetra said, some of these may even get pushed off or not done altogether once the master plan's done because they may overlap each other, et cetera. But we could find that there are some things in here that just have to be done. And maybe some of those things don't overlay right now with our, the capital that is mandated in our, our lease right now. And so we could use this document at this point in time to influence what we wind up doing within the context of our annual CIP program. So that's how I see this working in concert with our current CIP process. And then to get into a, a broader, longer-term discussions about implementation of this in the master plan within the context of lease discussions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's helpful, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we've already agreed to certain renovations that we're following through right now. Matter of fact, the Bengals have delayed some of the renovations that we were going to do to be more helpful to us. But major renovations like ramps and making more spaces and enhancement, of course, will not happen. But there are things on our CIP right now that we have to do, that we've been committed to do. And so we'll continue to do that. Thank you so much.
Of course, thank you for having me. Really excited.
Yeah. Okay, we will move forward. We have one additional item on our agenda. You guys have to stay. You're getting ready to pack up, I know, so. But I make a motion to go to executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22 G2, to discuss the acquisition of property.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you all.